Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the regular meeting of the City Commission of Tuesday, November twenty first, two thousand and seventeen. And I would like it if you'd all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to approve our agenda. There are copies of the agenda available at the recorder's desk as well as at the back of the commission chamber. I believe we have a couple of additions to the existing agenda. One is under the approval of minutes. We're going to add the November first special meeting minutes. And we're going to add item eight A, which is to discuss the ADA ramp at the rear of City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve this evening's agenda with the addition of November first special meeting minutes and item eight A, ADA ramp, City Hall.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. We have a couple of communications. I'll start by making note of communication number two, which is a check from the Huntington Woods Men's Club, the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Scotia Park project. So, much thanks to the Men's Club for doing their usual great things for our community. Anyone want to make a comment on the other communication?
AT&amp;T currently does not broadcast our commission live. And I would like to get a group of AT&amp;T subscribers together to look at this issue along with our finance director. One of the problems with AT&amp;T is although we are able to get access to other cable carriers, with AT&amp;T, for us to gain access, we would have to pay them thirteen thousand dollars for connection and setup. And one of the problems that creates is part of the community cannot watch this session live, although I'm sometimes wonder if you watch the session. Are you sane or not sane? But that aside, I'd like to get a group to look at this. It occurs with a lot of communities in Oakland County, and it really isn't fair. Once this is done, we are recording everything, and you can go up to our website and review the commission. But it really doesn't give equal access to people, and it forces communities to pay extra to look at education, or government channels, or public channels. It's not fair. It does seem that there is both Public Act four eighty of two thousand and seven, which sort of took away a lot of our rights. And before that, a federal act in nineteen ninety-nine, which fortunately occurred before I was elected. But I would like to see the city develop a committee that could explore this, and that committee be made up of AT&amp;T subscribers.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add that even if we did pay the money, the way the channel functions on U-verse is much different than how it functions on the other carriers, and that you tune to a channel, you wait for it to load, then a menu loads, then you would have to find Huntington Woods, have to select Huntington Woods, wait for that to load. So it's not just your channel surfing and oh, you come across the Huntington Woods local government channel like you would with the other two carriers. I think really what we could do is work through maybe the municipal league and look at amending this particular statute, talking with our very able and capable state representative, and seeing if perhaps we could look at amending this law to have the access be free to local governments, and that we don't have to pay an exorbitant fee in order to have the meetings broadcast. We don't need to scrap the whole statute, but if we can look at tweaking it, it might be something that the legislature would entertain.
Commissioner Jenk's approach to getting a group of Huntington Woods residents that are currently subscribers is a no-cost petition. So it's worthy of doing a dual-pronged approach on that, and possibly we could include in our, because they don't have the opportunity to watch this discussion tonight, those that have AT&amp;T have no idea that we're talking about them. Possibly we could include something on our weekly e-blast and see if there were any volunteers out there that would be interested in having local government access on there as part of their subscription, and they could help us out with that.
Joe, when Public Act four eighty was adopted, cable providers and the users spent three years developing a compromise. And then right before that compromise was to be voted on, there was a substitute bill put in that basically took away all of our rights. The other thing is, a lot of people are getting rid of cable, and they're going to internet access. And I would hope that the city also can explore different ways of live broadcasting. I know on Facebook, a person I'm involved with every day when he delivers food does live broadcasting. We already have all of the staff here doing the recording, and so, and I know at my synagogue they do live broadcasting of services. And I'd like to see us also explore that, because in many ways, people are disconnecting from cable.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Jeff, I'm well aware of how powerful AT&amp;T's lobby is in Lansing, and don't pretend to not be. I'm just suggesting that we entertain potentially a minor tweak, not scrap the whole statute to see if it's something that we could get through the legislature.
Any other comments? Moving on to our elected officials' remarks, I see we have our state representative and our county commissioner with us this evening, so who would ever like to go first?
Seniority. I'm Helene Zach, your county commissioner, serving for fifteen years. Couple of things. Last night, there was a town hall meeting on water in Oakland County, held at Cranbrook, and it talked, it was the head of the Health Department, Kathy Forsley, Jim Nash, the Water Resource Commissioner and engineer, talking about different water issues, such as the fact the infrastructure, three hundred and four thousand residents lost water a couple of weeks ago. It was a major catastrophic emergency. The good news is that our emergency plans did work well, and people collaborated, and they got the water on as fast as they could. Also addressing the septic tank issue, we don't have the septic systems here, but there are a hundred thousand in Oakland County, and roughly twenty-five percent of them pollute water systems. So we, the Board of Commissioners, has adopted a study committee to look at our policies that we have. Hopefully, a new code will be drafted that will require regular inspections on septic systems. So they were addressing some of these concerns. Last year's budget, the South End Caucus was able to get a half a million dollars toward clean water, drinking fountains, and we are in the process where the, it took us about a year to figure out how to do this, but Oakland County is doing a bulk purchase of filtration water systems and offering them for free to elementary schools throughout Oakland County. And I did communicate with Superintendent McDavid. We did replace a bunch of them with our bond dollars, but there's still a few left, and we are going to take advantage of it. And I know that other neighboring school systems are also doing it. You know, they're the type of thing that you see at the airport, where, you know, you can take a water bottle, which will also encourage recycling and sustainability, encourage students to drink water, and we can ensure that we have safe, clean pipes. It's cheaper to do that than replace pipes. Finally, the Oakland County Clerk does travel, and they are coming to Ferndale on November twenty-eighth. They will be at the Ferndale Library from ten to eleven-thirty a.m., and that is at two-two-two East Nine Mile Road. And people will be able to get all your different documents, marriage certificate applications, anything that you have to drive out to the county to get, you can do live with, you know, immediately, close to home. And they do, you know, rotate locations that they go to. Finally, one other thing, Small Business Saturday. We encourage people to buy local, and last year Oakland County added on to Small Business Saturday, and they are running an Oakland County shopper contest. And I have some cards here, but you can find more details at advantageoakland.com/shop small. And it's actually a week-long endeavor now. Not everybody shops on Saturdays. And by following the directions and entering, you are eligible for prizes from different sponsors. There's a five thousand dollar prize, a two thousand dollar prize, there's some travel vouchers and some other things. And this is to encourage people to support our local stores, and I think it's a wonderful initiative. So I'm going to leave them here if anybody's interested. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. State Representative Robert Wittenberg.
Thank you. I will always yield to you. I appreciate it. I learned a lot from Commissioner Zach, that's for sure, and she's always there for me, so I do appreciate it. So first, I wanted to come congratulate. I was here, was that last week or two weeks ago, for the swearing-in, but I got here eleven minutes after, I think it started, and it was done ten minutes after it started, so I apologize.
We have a recording now, but if you'd like...
Yeah, yeah, I'll go back.
I've watched it several times.
Yes. So, congrats to both of the commissioners being re-elected, congrats to our new mayor, Pro Tem, and also thank everyone that, you know, that was a part of the process, and David Sloan, who also ran for the position. I, as far as what we were, you guys were talking about earlier with AT&amp;T, I'd be happy to chat with you offline and see what we can do, and see if there is just, you know, a simple fix, and we'll see what we can do as far as introducing legislation in Lansing. So I know we'll chat about that. I also have to apologize for how I'm dressed. I know I'm usually dressed up, and I came from a tree lighting ceremony in Hazel Park prior to this, and I expected to be outside and in the cold, but actually thankfully they moved it inside in the ice arena, so I was spared that, but hence why I'm not dressed accordingly, so I do apologize. So, couple things. One, just wanted to remind people, the last community conversation coming up is here in Huntington Woods, coffee hour, if you will. It will be here at the library Thursday, December seventh, at seven-thirty p.m. And again, that's open to anyone and everyone. You know, we host, there are seven different communities in the twenty-seventh district, so we try to host at least two a month, and we rotate the communities every month. And so the last one for this calendar year will be here in Huntington Woods. We've had some really good discussions throughout the year, and it's a very informal setting, so I encourage people to come out there. I will give a brief update on what's going on in Lansing, and then we can have, you know, a conversation on whatever issues are on people's minds, questions, suggestions, concerns, happy to chat with anyone and everyone. And we have people from different communities that always show up, so don't feel like if anyone at home is watching, or they check it out online, let your friends and family know as well that live in the district. And even if you don't live, we have people who don't live in the district, but we're always happy to chat with anyone that wants to come to those. Brief update just on a couple issues that we've been dealing with in Lansing. It's been relatively slow, to be completely honest with you. Full disclosure, you have a Senate Majority Leader and a Speaker of the House, both Republicans, that don't really get along, and so they don't, they're not doing much as far as moving bills from one chamber to the other. So it's been pretty interesting to witness that. So when that's the case, obviously I'm as active as I can be here, going to events and, you know, holding coffee hours and things like that, so try to be as active as I can. But the two main issues that you probably would have heard about would be with auto no-fault and the bills, the guns in schools. Those are the two issues that you probably, you either have heard about or you will hear about. With the auto no-fault, just to give you kind of a brief background on this, you know, there was a bill that was pushed for, the sponsor, the main sponsor of the bill was Lana Tice, who's a state rep from Brighton, and she worked alongside with the Speaker of the House as well as Mayor Duggan. So you guys heard a little bit about this with Mayor Duggan involved in this. And I voted against the bill, and actually went up on the board and went down in flames. This is only the second time that, since I've been there, that a bill was up on the board that failed. Usually they will put, they only put bills up on the board that are going to pass. This one failed, and with bipartisan opposition to the bill. I won't go into all the specifics, but the thing that it boiled down to with me, you know, for me, and I heard from countless constituents who wanted me, obviously, to oppose this bill, very few that were supportive of it, because I think people in this district really understood the implications if this bill were to pass. But the main thing is that ultimately, we saw that Medicaid, if this were to go into effect, our Medicaid would be impacted by the tune of over a hundred million dollars a year. So in essence, the coverage that people would have, it would be gutted, and these people would be forced onto Medicaid eventually. And so I can go into more specifics, and I sent out an e-newsletter that went into all the specifics of this, of the bill. And again, if people want to have a more, a more in-depth conversation, they can come to the coffee hour, email me, or call me. But there were just so many issues with this, and so my thought is, we should be, you know, we pay high rates, and we should be looking at ways to lower our rates, but we have the best benefits in the country, and I think that's something to hang our hat on. And so before we start gutting our benefits, we should figure out what we can do to try to lower the costs. And so I didn't just say no, I'm also part of a bipartisan package of bills. There are, I think, twelve or thirteen legislators that have a bipartisan package of bills, and one of the lead sponsors and one of the people who kind of spearheaded this was a, he's a former staffer, he's a Republican former staffer for almost fifteen years, so he knows this issue inside and out. And he was one of the lead sponsors on this, and they're obviously Democrats, and I have a bill in this package as well. So this is what we're really pushing for, and we're hoping that the chair of the committee will bring this up, and the Speaker of the House will give this a chance, and we'd love to talk more about that. So that's one issue. The other issue, I can tell you, with the bills, I don't remember the bills offhand, the numbers, but ultimately allowing guns, so currently there's a loophole where you can open carry in schools if you have a concealed carry permit, and so obviously, we want to do away with that. We don't think you should be able to open carry in schools, and that's actually something that everyone agrees on. Republicans and Democrats agree on that. But what they're now proposing to do is they would close that, but then let anyone conceal carry in school, but there's the, you know, you have to go through a little bit more training in order to do this. But I've heard from countless constituents, and I've talked to, you know, in the twenty-seventh district, there are four school districts, I've talked to all the superintendents, principals, teachers, and not one person thinks this is a good idea. Not one person wants this to go through. And we know, you know, guns, they're dangerous weapons, and guns in homes, if they're not stored properly, are lethal. And we hear all the time of people getting shot in their own homes, or some, you know, a child mistakenly getting into a gun that's not stored properly, and if that happened in our schools, it'd be devastating. And we've seen in other states where this has gone, this has been passed, and we've seen insurance rates go up tremendously. And these insurance companies aren't partisan, they're doing it based on risk. You know, they're evaluating risk, and that's how they set their rates. And in these states where guns are allowed in schools, their rates have skyrocketed. So that right there tells you the danger of allowing guns in schools. So it's one thing if you are a police officer, you're armed security, you're hired and trained, and, you know, you know what you're doing and know how to handle a weapon, that's one thing, but just to have everyone and anyone be able to walk in the school with their weapon, it's a scary, scary thought. So I know if that comes to the House floor, I will oppose that. We're hoping that it does not make it to the House floor, it passed the Senate. The governor, I think it was five years ago, very similar legislation, I don't know, there was, I don't know if there were any changes, any substantive changes, but the legislation passed and went to the governor's desk, and it was right around the same time as Sandy Hook, and he vetoed the legislation. And so we're hoping that the same thing would happen if it made it to his desk. And you had one Republican senator, Marty Nolenberg, who's a senator just to the north of us here, did vote against it. His biggest issue, biggest issue was that there's no local control, that there's no actual opt-out, which would make it a little more palatable if you had local communities, you know, local school districts were able to opt out of this. So that was kind of a long-winded, sorry to, you know, telling you about what's going on in Lansing, but I just want to give you a brief update since I was here, and then encourage people to come out to the coffee hour, and then also call me if you ever have any questions, you need anything, I will, for those that are watching at home, or that will stream this later, five-one-seven-three-seven-three-zero-four-seven-eight, or you can email me, robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. So with that, I will either answer any questions or wish everyone at home a happy, healthy, and caloric Thanksgiving.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Have you changed your address by any chance?
Ah, yes, I am now a constituent of all of yours. I am newly, I'm a new Huntington Woods resident as of three weeks ago. So I'm here back where I grew up. You know, I was here, my parents moved into Huntington Woods in, I think it was nineteen seventy-four, my mom's still on Nadine, and so I am now a resident of all of yours, and I appreciate all that you do for the residents of Huntington Woods, and I'm proud to say that I'm one of those residents, so thank you, thank you. It's nice to be here. Thank you for that. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Public participation. Now is the opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on an item that is not already part of the agenda.
My name is David Sloan. I'm sure you know, I'll know where I live. I would like to thank the seven hundred and thirty-nine voters who voted for me for City Commission in my run against Mr. Rosell and Mr. Holsman. These seven hundred and thirty-nine people who truly supported me and supported my positions could not be bullied and could not be intimidated. They supported my visions in having this city as a forward-thinking vision, promoting a welcoming atmosphere where residents could present new and diverse ideas, and promoting my vision of environmental solutions to aid in flooding and city planning, and promoting universal design where you have your home for easy access for all ages, and also financial openness. They supported me on that, where residents direct costs for sewer repairs, legal and professional fees are all in the open, and they all are shared with everyone. I love this city. I've watched this city for sixty-five years. I remember when Woodward Avenue was totally green. I've known four generations of several families here. One lady just recently had her birthday. I knew her mother, her grandmother, and her great-grandmother, and they all lived in my neighborhood. And I know several families of four generations. There was one gentleman, sent me an email on Election Day, he said, "I just became a citizen, and my first vote is for you." And I appreciated that. I've received many, many thank yous, sincere thank yous from people thanking me for running for this office and for devoting my time and energy. And I want to thank my wife Kathy, who without her, this race could not have started or continued. And I also want to thank Amy Sullivan and her staff. They've been very open, they've been very helpful, all of them, and I have great respect for their abilities, and I've learned about them more so in the last three years. And then Tony Lehman, I knew you as a child, so remember you for a long longer. So I thank you all for your time and for your energy, and I'm staying active.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. I would note that we have several members of the Huntington Woods Boy Scout troop here observing our meeting tonight. I'm going to apologize because I guess the meeting would take an hour, and here we are twenty-five minutes into it, and we haven't even really started yet, so my guess was a little off, but we'll keep things moving along. All right, next, we have a presentation on Watertown Green Infrastructure by the Clinton River Watershed Council and Don Carpenter. And?
Abby.
Abby.
Yep, Abby.
Yeah, I think you want us to move.
I think we have a PowerPoint.
Tell me when you're ready.
So typically, this would be Amanda Oparka, who is our watershed planner here presenting to you, but she had a death in the family, so I am stepping in today to fill in for her part of the presentation. And Don Carpenter is here with me as well. He's the expert here for this program. But without further ado, I'll get started. So we are here to talk about the green infrastructure improvements that have been proposed for some different locations here in Huntington Woods through the Watertowns program that you participate in with the Watershed Council. So a little bit about the Clinton River Watershed Council. We are a nonprofit that's based in Rochester Hills, Michigan. We cover the entire Clinton River watershed as our service area. Our mission is to protect, enhance, and celebrate the Clinton River, its watershed, and Lake St. Clair. The watershed itself is about seven hundred and sixty square miles. We have over a thousand miles of streams, many inland lakes, and other valuable water resources here. Huntington Woods is within our watershed. You support our organization through an annual membership, which is what connects you to this program and these other... Um, you support our organization through an annual membership, which is what, um, connects you to this program and these other resources as well. Um, the vision for our watershed is that individual and community actions protect and improve the health of the Clinton River, assuring that its natural, economic, and recreational value enhances the quality of life of those who live, work, and play in the Clinton River watershed and Lake St. Clair. So, um, we're here today as part of our Watertowns Program. This is funded wholly by the Herb Family Foundation and is a, uh, partnership with Drummond Carpenter, um, the Lawrence Tech Great Lakes Stormwater Management Institute, and the Clinton River Watershed Council. This is our place-based, um, program where we are connecting residents to their water body, to the local water bodies, um, through art, history, education, ecology, and also helping to protect these valuable water resources through, um, the implementation of green infrastructure and many other programs, um, and projects. So, I think, um, without any further ado, I'm going to pass this over to Don Carpenter and he is going to introduce some of the different projects that, um, we've gone through and created. So, Don Carpenter is with, um, the Lawrence Tech Great Lakes Stormwater, um, uh, Management Institute, sorry.
So apparently this is a Berkeley High Alumni Speaking Night, so. Many of you know me, not everybody does though, but, um, uh, my parents also moved into Huntington Woods in nineteen seventy-four. So, we got at least another thing. And, and my parents also still live in Huntington Woods in Pembroke. And if this was live, they'd be watching it right now, but they're not feeling too well this evening, so they're going to watch it when it's streamed later. So, I know they're going to check up on me. Uh, in all fairness as well, I had to sit where those gentlemen were back there, Eagle Scout from Troop Twelve-Ninety-Two, so I also had to sit and listen to a boring council meeting. So, we've all been there, trust me. So, so let me tell you a little bit more about this program. So, we're really, obviously, uh, my connection to Huntington Woods, uh, this was a very personal endeavor for me as well. Have had, uh, really enjoyed working with Amy on this project over the summer. Um, have many, have had many conversations with Claire over the years and some of the work, the environmental work that's been done here. Uh, played a very small role in the Scotia Park Project with some of the engineering calculations last year, so it's exciting to see that happen as well. The Scotia Park Project's not part of this, but there's a lot of similarities and synergies upon these things. Um, I do want to point out a couple of other things or at least get them on the record right off the bat, right? And that, one is that this entire endeavor here through the Clinton River Watershed Council, as, uh, as Abby mentioned, it was funded by the Herb Family Foundation, so everything you see is going to be, was free to the city of Huntington Woods. This didn't cost the city anything. The other thing is you're going to see a lot of visioning, a lot of ideas. Uh, these are things you can take or leave, right? It's a, it's a palette of opportunities. You may not like all of them and that's fine, right? You may fall in love with some and that's fine as well, okay? So, just, I want to make sure we're clear on that. Nobody's saying you have to do all these things, okay? So, so what are you going to get? So, what we're going to do is we're going to go through, um, some series of conceptual site plans for your artistic renderings for green stormwater infrastructure, that's what we're going to talk about. Each one of these activities is going to have a certain amount of volume of stormwater that's captured and treated. The concept there, right, is clean water. Whatever we capture and treat in green stormwater infrastructure, we keep out of the Clinton River, we keep out of the Red Run, we make it healthier for all the communities here and farther downstream. And then you're going to see an estimated cost of those improvements. This is, uh, our fourth year of doing this program. It's been a very, very successful program. Uh, this year we're doing Huntington Woods, New Baltimore and St. Clair shores. So, New Baltimore and St. Clair shores are actually right on, obviously, Lake St. Clair. Um, and when we were going through this project, one of the things I heard was Huntington Woods? Well, that's nowhere near the Clinton River. It's still in the watershed and people are like, well, Huntington Woods, how could that be a water town? Again, the watershed belongs to everybody, so it's very appropriate that this is a water town. What is green and stormwater infrastructure? Uh, I, I threw the USCPA definition up there, but effectively what we're talking about is using Mother Nature to clean up stormwater. I am an engineer. I've been an engineer a long time, and I know no matter what engineers tell you, Mother Nature does things frequently better than we can, okay? So, that's green infrastructure. The other thing that's important about green infrastructure is that the human element is really, really important. So, what we're talking about is using Mother Nature to reverse the effects of urbanization, reduce the effects of flooding, clean up our water quality, and do it with a place-based component. How can we make better places for people to live, work, and play, the kind of things we can get behind, right? Uh, what I wanted to say here real quick is the deliverables. The deliverables are, oh, I got to get that out of my bag. Almost forgot, although I know where Amy's office is. Um, all of these things are going to be provided in electronic format to you. You get the report. There's actually a very nice report that comes with it. There's printed graphic boards which are out in the hallway right there that the citizens, you can just leave up or put anywhere you want for the system to look at. This PowerPoint presentation, obviously, and everything we give, we give all the Excel spreadsheets, all the calculations, all the cost estimates, all the figures. These are wonderful tools to actually help you apply for grants, which Abby and Ann might talk about later. But we give you things that you can kind of get a leg up, a foot, a start to actually apply for additional funding opportunities. The other thing I'm going to talk about, cost for a second, is we are doing cost estimates. They're conceptual cost estimates. Uh, all of them are done with what we would call primary contract labor, which means they're going to be on the high side. We don't assume any community has any capacity, but a lot of these things can be done with volunteer or in-kind services and bring the cost down. But you're going to see kind of what happens if you pay for a landscape architect and a contractor and all the high-end type stuff. As we go through these, and pretty soon I'm going to go a lot faster, I, I promise, um, as we go through these, what you're going to see is every practice we recommend has got a little, little, uh, raindrop. And that raindrop basically represents how much water's currently running off of your pavement for a two-point-two-six inch rain, which is basically, you know, a little over two inches of rain. So, a little over a two-inch rainfall event, we don't really get one of those every year, okay? Another way to look at it, that's like a ninety-nine percent rainfall, which means ninety-nine percent of the time, less than that falls out of the sky, okay? So, all the things that we're designing are, would capture and treat ninety-nine percent of all rainfall events that happen year, all the time, okay? And so some things are going to be really effective at capturing the rain, others are not going to be as effective, and you'll see that in the drops. So, one of the things that's really nice about Huntington Woods is actually a lot of good practices already, and I'm not going to go through a lot of details, but you've got porous pavement, um, in certain areas, you've got a lot of natural areas, obviously Scotia Park's coming in line. There's some wonderful examples just right here in, in your own community. So, we looked at three areas in Huntington Woods. One was around the library and some of the parking lot by the community center. The, uh, second one was Statue Park, uh, over by the hill. At least, we used to call it the hill. I don't know if they still do, but Statue Park by the hill. And, um, then the third area is, is what I would call a generic local street, and you'll see what I mean by that in a second. So, when you get two inches of rain out of the sky, that's how many gallons of water are currently coming off of, of these areas we looked at. So, what's, uh, here's the existing. What we're proposing is a series of permeable pavements, uh, some tree box filters, some infiltration trenches. One of the things that I look at is I look at opportunities for retrofits. This project is all about retrofits. It's not about new construction. So, how about we keep water out of the Clinton River that's currently going into the Clinton River watershed? And I also look at when infrastructure becomes aged or is ready to be replaced, this is what I would recommend. I don't recommend whipping up perfectly good new things. It's about, hey, when it's time to replace it, let's get smarter about how we deal with it. Okay, how do we keep water out of the, you know, this is out of your basements, right? Many of us had that issue in twenty-fourteen. So, here's the, kind of an existing picture. So, what we do is we look for opportunity. So, here's the, uh, existing area right in front of Burton Elementary, right in front of the community center. You know, this would be a great spot to kind of formalize that a little bit, put in a couple of tree box filters and trenches. What you don't see here, let's see if my, yeah, it does work. That is an inlet, that is an inlet. Underneath all of this is stone, so we're actually capturing and treating and keeping all that water in the stone. So, from above you see pavers and trees, underneath is storage, okay? So, that's, and so that would hold fifty-six percent of all the water that comes off of there. So, there's, uh, several opportunities for tree boxes up and down that area. So, here's an existing, it's going to look, okay? When it comes time to redo that parking lot, you actually might want to re-pitch it when you repave it and actually put in some bioretention cells kind of along the front here, right? So, right now what you've got, oop, sorry. Right now you've got kind of this area right here that's unutilized with that wall. A great opportunity for when you're redoing your infrastructure, look at putting some bioretention in there, rain gardens. Here's an existing catch basin. We've got three of these in that parking lot, right? Here's a good opportunity for permeable pavers, concrete paver blocks, or you can do permeable asphalt or porous concrete. There's several different options that would be available to you that captures and treats that water with the existing infrastructure serving as the overflow. So, when you do get more rain, it's still got a place to go, right? It doesn't just back up in the parking lot. Here's, um, an existing park, so curb cuts and rain gardens. One of the things we try to do is identify areas where, um, there are no existing trees. Trees do a wonderful job with the stormwater already, right? So, we don't want to take advantage, we don't want to hurt any existing trees. So, here's a nice little opportunity right there along Statue Park, perfect spot to put in a rain garden, right? This rain garden is size-limited. There's not that much room right here. Um, so that's why you only see twenty-two percent, but any percentage is better than no percentage, and that's twenty-two percent again of a two-inch rainstorm. This is the one I put the two numbers on, right? So, we would estimate that this would cost you about seventeen thousand dollars if you contracted the whole thing out to a landscaping firm and a, and a landscape developer. If you, uh, organize the Environmental Action Committee, take advantage of some of your existing resources, you can probably get it done for about five thousand dollars. And we might hear a little bit more about mini grant opportunities in a little bit, teasing up the Watershed Council. So, the last thing we're going to look at is the thing that you might react, uh, it'd be interesting to see how people react to this. But as the idea of typical streets, right, as I mentioned, you know, um, my, my parents have lived here for over forty years. I know what the Huntington Woods infrastructure is like, I know what the streets are like. So, we just decided to pick a single block. So, if you happen to live on this block of Salem, don't freak out, okay? This is just a typical block. It happened to be the one we did our images on. Nobody's saying we're going to put a, a shovel in front of your house next summer, okay? But we wanted to show you what was possible, right? So, there's the zoo in the background, kind of orient you a little bit. This is a street that's probably due to be repaired here in the next year or two because it's starting to get a little worn, right? You see right now there's no kind of stormwater infrastructure here at all, little bit extra pavement on both sides. So, let's, let's think about this for a second, right? So, in this particular street, there is no catch basin, but a lot of Huntington Woods streets do have a catch basin. So, I put an existing stormwater infrastructure system there. What happens now is water flows in it and then heads down the storm sewer out to the George Coon Drain and the Red Run ultimately, right? So, what's possible, right? Well, one thing that's possible is to curb it and put in a catch, uh, put in a, um, an inlet, right? So, the water comes down, goes in inlet, goes in these rain gardens. When this fills up, it spills back into the existing system. We also put an underdrain in here so you don't get too much ponding of water, right? You, you don't, you're not creating swamps in people's front yards. You're creating gardens in people's front yards. This has been hot, very, very successful in Southfield, very successful in Lathrop Village, right? Basically, the idea here is each, again, this is a professional contractor cost, um, about thirteen thousand dollars for a rain garden in front of each home. If you look at the whole block, it's about fifty thousand dollars. That's kind of how the costs work out, right? And it catches about eight, six, almost sixty percent of the water from that two-inch event. Don't, don't like flowers? You can actually do this stuff in grass. Toledo does everything in grass, so the homeowners can still ma, uh, mow it, right? It still provides the same type of function as a rain garden, except you can mow it, okay? So, that's what actually Toledo does. Infiltration trenches, all right? So, what this now is, is you've got the stone reservoir that nobody sees. All you see from above is a grate that grates the conduit for the water that fills up the stone underneath. This is basically providing a whole bunch of underground detention basins or stone reservoirs that holds that water so that it doesn't rush down to the Clinton River and potentially back up into basements, right? It's creating storage inside the right-of-way that nobody can see, but you know it's there doing what it's supposed to do. Okay? We can also have some options where you do plastic pipes that give you increase in storage, okay? What about pavers, right? What about actually doing permeable pavers? So, a lot of communities now, especially in combined sewer areas, are looking at doing parking stalls off to the side in par, in permeable pavers. Or this is what we might call a green gutter. We call it a green gutter that instead of it being a concrete gutter, it's actually permeable paver, so the water goes into the reservoir along the way. But now you're starting to see a little bit more of what the infrastructure is that's working for you. So, this could actually also be permeable pavers with gravel. Some individual homeowners right around the corner from this are already doing this. You just don't realize it. They don't have all the stone underneath, but they put these paver systems in, so when people park their cars slightly in the grass, which is really common in Huntington Woods, you're not sinking down in the mud. You actually got some slope stability there. So, which might look like this. So, you could, this is actually reinforced concrete block that you can plant grass seed on. City of Holland, Michigan, this is what they're doing, right? So, now you're kind of, you know, yeah, your car can park on this, but the, um, the difference between the grass and you've got kind of this blending effect between your front lawn and the road. People are parking in their front lawns already, to be honest, in a lot of these Huntington Woods streets, right? And, you know, just to be real, sometimes it doesn't quite look perfect, right? You might have, you know, sometimes you see a little bit more of the concrete than, than you do other times, okay? So, um, in summary, what, you know, some of these ideas we've put forward to you, what we're looking at is we're looking at keeping about eighty thousand gallons out of the Clinton River pretty much in perpetuity all the time. Uh, the total price of all the improvements we recommended was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is about a dollar eighty per gallon. So, one of the things I like to say is, you know, for less than the cost of a gallon of milk, you're capturing and treating this water in perpetuity for future generations, right? Um, implementation, and I think this is what you actually wanted me to cover. So, Amanda Oparka, some of you know Amanda, if I talk about implementation. But I'm going to, do you want to step up or you want me to handle it? You got it? All right. Okay. So, Ann and, and Abby can jump in if I say anything wrong, because I'm speaking on behalf of the Clinton River Watershed Council at this point in time. By being a Watertown, you're eligible for a five-thousand-dollar mini grant, right? And what the idea is, you can implement one of our suggested projects, or you can go off the board and implement another project that might be similar to some of the things that we recommended. It requires at least a one-to-one match. That match can be a financial match, or it can be in-kind services, right? So, you could donate in-kind labor or some DPW staff and then use the cash for the things that, like, the implementation. So, great opportunity maybe for Statue Park. Um, Clinton River Watershed Council helps with implementation of the mini grant project that you guys implement. They also help with ideas for maintenance plans, so how do you keep maintaining these things? And they are also great at helping communities write future grant applications. They've helped City of Centerline, they've helped, uh, New Baltimore, they've helped other communities write grants to get funding through like the Coastal Zone Man, well, this wouldn't be Coastal Zone Management, but Three-Nineteen money or Herb Family Foundation money, some of the other opportunities that are out there. I'm going to go through this really quick. I know it's a long meeting. These are the other Watertowns that we've done over, we've done twelve Watertowns now over a twelve, uh, over a four-year period, so you can kind of see some of the other Watertowns. Hope to pull in, you know, some of the other ones here, Oak Park, maybe Royal Oak in the future. So, Clarkston. Clarkston, this is what we proposed in twenty-fourteen. So, this bridge right here, that wooden bridge, was actually a, an old Eagle Scout project, and it got so unsafe, they actually had to board it up and make it so people couldn't use it. So, you can see that's the existing, that was the bridge in twenty-fourteen. That was our rendering. There's the new bridge right there. Um, the new bridge was actually donated by a Clarkston resident. He gave a hundred thousand dollars to put this bridge in, so they basically implemented the rendering that we recommended for the bridge. And then that's the gentleman who actually, uh, donated the bridge. They used the five-thousand-dollar mini grant from the Clinton River Watershed Council to plant rain gardens and stream stabilization. So, the, the bridge basically counted as the match, and then they used the five-thousand dollars for the rest of that. Clinton Township, they have this pond out there. You guys don't have any ponds, but this pond right here, uh, was, they use it for fishing, but the problem was they weren't maintaining it very well, so it became a real goose problem and a lot of water quality issues with it. And so we recommended, uh, formalized fishing access and naturalizing the shoreline there. Notice the cost, sixty-eight-hundred. That's what it looked like in twenty-fifteen when they planted it. They used their DPW staff, and so the, basically the mini grant paid for all the plants. One, one year later, two years later. So, this is what it looked like this summer, just beautiful butterflies, a lot of, um, pollinators, really great habitat out there. And the fishing is improving as well because there's less geese. So, Clinton Township, we, uh, kind of recommended some rain gardens along the edge of the parking lot here. So, this is, this was their parking lot in twenty-sixteen. We gave them some ideas of how they could green this parking lot up, tons of really bad asphalt here. They listened to us. They put in parking lot islands, they widened this median, they put in rain gardens all the way around here. So, and this is their parking lot island that they put in based on the, the renderings, the things we recommended. Obviously, these are a lot more than five-thousand-dollar mini grant projects, but they saw the vision of what they could do and, and then decided to implement it when it was time to replace their parking lot. They had a capital improvement project anyway. It was a perfect opportunity to do it green. Rochester Hills is right outside the Clinton River Watershed Council office. Here's the, uh, existing, this was the twenty-fifteen condition. This is our, our design rendering for it. And that's the implementation of it after the fact, and it's working great. So, this is your. Yeah, I need, we need a new picture. We got to get a new picture. This is, yeah. We need a new picture. So, uh, City of Sterling Heights, this is their existing, this was their parking lot last year at their, uh, community center. A lot of the work I do is parking lot retrofits. I do a lot with parking lot retrofits. So, we recommended they redo this parking lot, put in some bioretention islands, re-stripe things to get a little bit better access to some of the area over here. You can kind of see some of the details, but that was their parking lot beforehand. That was what we rendered in the bottom right-hand corner right there, and that's what they implemented. And they used the mini grant for the plants for this and then helped with the mulch and some other stuff. And that is it. So, um, at this time, I can entertain any questions if you have them. Alternatively, Amy gets everything we've done and you obviously can follow up with me later if any questions come up in the future. Thank you for your time.
Don, how do you deal with silting?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
How do you deal with silting?
Silting?
Yeah.
So, there's a couple of other ways. Um, to not get super technical, the best thing you can do with silting is capture it up front. So, for example, with the rain garden, you put in like a stone distribution at the front, so all that silk kind of piles up against that stone, and then you basically come in with a shovel and take it out. For the underground practices, you put a sump in, and so the silk actually still goes. For the underground practices, you put a sump in, and so the silk actually still goes through the opening, but then it settles in the bottom of the pretreatment or the catch basin area, and then you can just vacuum it right out. So, um, we actually, I, I work in some northern Michigan communities like Northport and Traverse City, where they sand the roads. And so, we gotta make sure they keep up on their, basically their street sweeping and their, which you guys street sweep already for leaves and things of that nature. Um, but we, you know, they use vacuum trucks basically periodically to keep that silk out of it. There's engineering solutions to that.
Mr. Mayor, what experience, uh, did you have with, uh-
With Tony.
Light.
Trenches, uh, and a grate maybe at like, uh, the end of a driveway, so that water coming down a driveway is diverted into those, uh, easement retention areas?
It works. Yep, it absolutely does work, you know? That, if you're doing something like that, now you're talking about kinda a public-private partnership, because the driveway is, you know, private space. Uh, I can tell you that we're looking at doing quite a few more of those in the city of Detroit because of the drainage charge. That's not reflected in this community, but the city of Detroit, but the WZ drainage charge. Um, we're actually recommending that in quite a few locations, because individuals have to capture and treat their own stormwater, otherwise they get a fee. So, it is an effective practice, it just takes a little bit more implementation. Everything we recommended here was in the public driveway, so.
Great. Thank you.
I think we have, uh, some great ideas here that have been presented to us. Would it be appropriate to, uh, forward this documentation to the, to our environmental advisory committee and have them review it and, uh, maybe come back to the city commission with some recommendations on how to proceed?
I also wanted, uh, uh, thank Claire, cuz she's the one that brought the Watertowns program to our attention, which is how this whole thing kicked off. So, kudos to you, and I do think the environmental advisory committee would like to take a look at this in more detail and come back with some recommendations for the, uh, mini grant application. Thank you, very well done.
Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to our public hearing. It's a matter of receiving public comment on the proposed use of the nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars allocated to the city of Huntington Woods under the Community Development Block Grant Program for two thousand and eighteen. Do you wanna briefly review?
Yep, the recommendation from staff is to split the approximately nine thousand dollars, uh, take thirty percent, which is the maximum that we can, um, allocate toward public service category. That would be used to offset the wages for our senior citizen transportation, and then the balance of seventy percent, about six thousand dollars, would go, go, go toward, um, making the city hall bathrooms ADA accessible.
Okay, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on these recommendations. Seeing none, I am going to close public participation, or the public hearing, and, uh, move on to our, uh, regular items of business. First item being, uh, authorizing this allocation for the two thousand and eighteen CDBG funding.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, move that the city of Huntington Woods allocate the two thousand and eighteen HUD CDBG allocation for Huntington Woods, uh, to the following two classes. Transportation driver's wages, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and removal of architectural barriers, six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I'll second.
Any public comment? Any comments or questions at the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two, matter of considering approval of an agreement between the city of Huntington Woods and the city of Berkeley for the bulk purchase of rock salt and vehicle fuel. And we have a changed item at the table this evening.
Yes, uh, the agreement was revised slightly. The section on, uh, dispute resolution was revised at the suggestion of the city attorney, and the city of Berkeley agreed with that. So, you should have received the revised copy via email and also at your desk. Uh, there were no other changes to the agreement.
Mr. Mayor. I'll move that, uh, the city of Huntington Woods enter into an agreement with the city of Berkeley for bulk purchase of rock salt and vehicle, uh, fuel and the use of the Berkeley DPW facility. Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none, any comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're moving right along now. Item number three, is a matter of considering the city of Huntington Woods, through the efforts of the legal, our legal counsel and finance department, negotiate a draft agreement allowing for the lease of storage space for municipal vehicles on a location nearby, with the final lease agreement, including any budget amendments, to be transmitted to the city commission for final approval.
This is a, an effort that, uh, we'd like to tackle. Uh, we do have a lot of DPW equipment that we don't have room to store, uh, in buildings. Uh, we do store some of it off-site at, uh, our contractor, Tringali, a rubbish contractor, but that is in Troy, so we don't have immediate access to the equipment, and their, their space is narrowing, and we're getting more equipment that needs to be, uh, stored. So, it's time to look at alternative arrangements to protect this very equipment, DPW equipment, that we purchased, and also to have, uh, quicker access to it. So, the, this is, this is conceptual in nature, in that we would like to get the city's commission approval to go out and to look for, uh, nearby locations where we possibly could store the equipment. I had explained it to the mayor earlier, that it's kinda like getting, uh, pre-approved for a mortgage, and that way the people that you're dealing with know that you're serious about it, and it's not just, you know, a, a, a concept, um, but any arrangements, uh, any agreement would of course come to the city commission, you know, for your approval, but this makes it a bit of a more serious offer when we talk to potential, uh, uh, facilities, that, that we, you know, we, we are, um, serious about this. So, the idea is to get the equipment protected, and to do that, we're going to have to go off-site, because our DPW building is just too old and too small. And so, we'd like to explore this option and bring back, um, suggestions to the city commission, once we find something that meets our needs. And so, there's a, there's a recommended resolution as well. Again, you're not, you're not agreeing to anything, you're just authorizing the city to, to go out and explore this i- idea.
Yeah, I don't know who was on the, who, who was on the, uh, city commission board when we originally were going to have a building built. This just goes back fifteen years ago, and, uh, and we determined not to do so at that point, but, but in some reassessment of this, uh, we've come to the conclusion that this is a very good option for us, so.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, uh, move that the city of Huntington Woods, through the efforts of legal counsel and finance department, negotiate a draft agreement allowing for the lease of storage space for municipal vehicles at a location nearby, and that the final lease agreement, including any budget amendments, be transmitted to the city commission for final approval.
Any, uh, comments or questions from the public?
Um, Claire, Deland, one zero zero eight four LaSalle. Um, since Tony brought it up, I would not have brought it up, but since Tony, I do think, Mr. Lehman, that we should take a look again at putting up a building like we talked about a million years ago. That building was estimated at a hundred thousand dollars?
Well.
Depending on what we build.
No, no, it was not, it was more than that, but.
Well, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'll even give you that.
It's actually-
But if you're starting to look at twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars now, going up in the future, it may be worthwhile to look at. I'm just suggesting that in the entire picture, not that, not that it be an immediate option, but that as you look at rentals, I think it's a great idea, we've needed to do this, we've talked about it for years. I think it's a great idea. It's not so easy to find a building that the factor can go in, and that's gonna be the big problem. But, um, I would just suggest that, that be looked at, because as you accumulate years of rent, pretty soon you've paid for that building, and then you have all this rent going forward. So, I'm just suggesting that as, as an option. I'd be glad to look at it with you.
Uh, I'd ask the chair if I could make a good comment on that.
Sure.
The building was a hundred and ninety-six thousand at, uh, at the time. It was a loan through Comerica Bank that was just large enough of a building that would barely fit the vector. This was fifteen years ago. Uh, and, uh, we determined that because of this amount of equipment we now own, much of it is new and terribly expensive, that even if we determined to build a building, which is unlikely because of the cost and some of the other things we may want to do with this property here, it doesn't make sense then in the next few years, in a short-term lease, a year or so. This is not something that will stop us from doing anything, that we'll simply be able to harbor these expensive vehicles for a short period of time, and maybe a longer period of time, depending on the wishes of the city commission and the economics of doing so. So, I'll leave you with that thought.
What year was that Comerica loan?
I'm going to say that that was probably in two thousand and four, five, six, and yes.
Then twelve years, twelve years ago.
And, and it was just large enough to, uh, clearly remember to put the dash in there. We struggled and tried to, that was really the rationale.
So, in today's dollars, the cost would be exponentially higher.
Well, and not to mention, you have a lot of costs involved in safety and equipment of that nature, which was not so much the case then, so, uh-
It was a concern.
Between space-wise, cost-wise, uh, building size-wise, uh, it's unlikely.
Mr. Mayor. I think too, that, that the bottom line here is that we're leasing space now, and by moving the leased space closer, it's almost cost-neutral, because of the amount of time that we're having to spend in lost productivity, driving such a distance to take this equipment up and drive it here and return it, et cetera. So, uh, we're leasing now, we'd be continuing to lease, be much closer to us and, and almost, uh, cost-neutral. So, I think this is, for the time being, a good idea to pursue.
It always leaves all the options on the table for the commission and for the city, uh, and, uh, that's our goal.
We're not talking about a long-term lease, you're talking-
Very short.
So, that makes tremendous second thoughts.
Perhaps a year, perhaps two.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four. Matter of consideration that the city of Huntington Woods accept a concept for the refurbishing of the city hall restrooms in order so that they can be made ADA compliant.
That the reconstruction or the, or remodeling of the bathrooms here at city hall has, is much more complicated than you would think because of the construction of the building. So, it has taken some time to put together a plan that, uh, is affordable. And part of paying for the plan would be to use CDBG funds from twenty fifteen, but, uh, the county wants to make sure that the, those funds are used, otherwise they recapture them. So, this is a resolution that puts the county on notice that even though we haven't used these funds yet, we still intend to use them for the ADA bathroom, to make the bathroom ADA accessible, and we don't want them to capture the funds. So, it's kind of a, an affirmation of something that we've already stated, but we want the county to know that we mean it, and we're working on it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city will utilize the two thousand and fifteen block grant monies together with additional monies in two thousand and sixteen and eighteen to renovate city hall, restrooms, in order that they be made ADA compliant, and that the city allocate capital planning dollars in the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen fiscal year in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars in order to complete the project as envisioned.
Second.
Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is a matter of consideration of the ratification of the public safety union contract between the Public Officers Labor Council and the city of Huntington Woods.
Yes, this was the only collective bargaining agreement that, uh, it actually expired June thirtieth, that we negotiated this year. We were able to reach a tentative agreement, the union ratified it a couple of weeks ago, and so I'm asking the city commission to ratify it tonight, and then we'll get those contracts signed.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will move that, uh, the city of Huntington Woods ratify the contract, uh, between the police officers labor council and the city of Huntington Woods. Second.
Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, wanna commend, uh, city administration, my colleagues on the commission, the police union, and our individual public safety officers for, uh, working together, avoiding Act three twelve arbitration, and, uh, agreeing that for new hires going forward, they will be part of a defined contribution retirement plan, rather than a defined benefit retirement plan. This allows us to close that plan out for, uh, public safety officers, and, uh, we'll go a long way into helping to shore up and getting a clear picture on what our, uh, liability will be to fund that program. So, um, frankly, this is a big deal, and I wanna really, uh, again, commend, uh, our city manager, finance, uh, director, my colleagues here, as well as, as our public safety officers. Um, everybody gets it, and everybody worked together, and this was one of three major things that we've accomplished over the last few years to, uh, bring our costs in line. And, uh, now it's, you know, onto phase two, and that is shoring up that DB plan. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we now, uh, can move forward on that, and, uh, I just, again, can't say enough about everybody's efforts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, resolution, uh, regarding the matter of consideration in support of the reinstatement of the state historic tax credits.
Yes, this was brought to my attention by, uh, Hank Berry. Uh, the Michigan legislature is considering, uh, where two bills have been introduced that would reinstate tax credits for individuals that live in a historic district and do improvements to their home. It was something that was phased out in two thousand and eleven, and it's being considered for, to be reintroduced. So, this, uh, memo explains the history, uh, the value that it has to the residents of the city of Huntington Woods, and we're asking for the city commission's support for the attached resolution, so we could send it up to Representative Wittenberg and Senator Gregory. There's no downside to the city. Um, it is strictly a relationship between the resident who does the work on their historic home, and the, um, they get credit stored to their income tax, and so it's a, it's a win for the community that our historic homes are preserved, and it's, and residents are encouraged to do so, and it's a win for the residents who have their income tax, um, offset. So, we would certainly support an initiative like this.
I would, I would add to that, that, uh, during the period when these credits were available for Huntington Woods, which was two thousand and four through two thousand and eleven, because two thousand and four is when we established our historic district, our residents received three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in credits, uh, towards improvements in their home, so it was very beneficial to Huntington Woods.
Happy towards residents.
Right. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Susan Karabelnick, two six 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 five York Road. Is this, first of all, is it retroactive?
One, one of the two.
One, one of the two bills is retroactive. The other one isn't, but what, what will come of it, we do not know.
As I recall, when we first started with this historic district thing, it was a pilot program for two years. And then we were supposedly gonna be able to discuss it and decide whether we wanted to pursue it. And it was approved without us talking about it. And I don't know when the cutoff date was that they stopped giving these tax credits. But there's a, a fair amount of people, I think, that have done improvements and stuff to their property since then.
Two thousand and eleven was when they.
That was really when it ended on. Okay. Cause I would like to take advantage of that.
Retroactive would be nice.
Yes, very helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, any comments or questions?
Yeah, um, what's nice about this is, yes, there are added expenses very often in the historic district. And this was one way along with the federal credit of, uh, double dipping to, uh, get some of that money coming back. Uh, State Representative Stephanie Chang is, uh, the bill five one one seven, and there are two house bills. But she proposes actually to go back to twenty eleven. And what this resolution does is it supports two house bills and one senate bill. The only difference between the, uh, two bills is that Stephanie's goes back to twenty eleven. The other two are, uh, uh, current. And the advantage in this is even if we can't go all the way back to twenty eleven, maybe we can capture part of that time period and get more money back for residents.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, uh, motion carries. We have the, uh, the resolution enclosed in our packet. So we're forward that along. Item number seven is a, uh, a first introduction and first reading of the new ordinance or an ordinance to amend the city of Huntington Woods code of ordinances by amending chapter twenty-eight peddlers, solicitors and canvassers. I thought we were done with this.
This is, this is coming before you because there was an amendment to the state statute that now permits soliciting in the street by charitable organizations.
Thank God.
So, um, this amendment would, would allow that to occur. The statute is specific under what circumstances it can occur. That amendment would address it. The statute, just so the city understands, also says that, you know, they can't sue you for this. All right. So, you know, they choose to do it at their own risk, but it's just.
Can't sue who?
Can't sue the city.
Under what theory would someone sue the city if they wanted to stand on a public street, solicit charitable funds?
Oh, no, if they get hit.
I, I, I understand.
Yeah. Oh, I know, I know. But still, it's nice that it affirmatively says it, you know? So.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a nonsensical concept, uh, to begin with, that, that concept, that somebody, that a city can be sued because, uh, somebody went to stand in the street to solicit funds.
Well, let's say they fell in a hole in the road, in the walkway.
Well.
And, you know.
Unless it's, uh, you know, well, that's true. If it's the paid portion.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah. So something like that.
But when two circumstances in the state.
Where you could avoid governmental immunity. I do have one question for all of you though. And that's on, if you can look at page four. Oh, bottom of page three, number C. I think that I want to stop that sentence to, or change it to read such persons shall attempt to move off the roadway portion of the road when traffic is moving and shall locate two highly reflective orange cones in the center of the roadway and attempt to operate within that area when engaged in activity. And le- leave the rest out because I don't know that we wanna be forcing them to go in and out of traffic. So what are your thoughts on that?
Most of the time they just sort of stand on a line to stay there while traffic's moving.
Stay there, yeah. Yeah, and I sort of wrote it where if, okay, move off the road if you're not do- and that's probably puts that more risk. So.
This is, this whole, this whole.
I know you hate this whole concept, yeah.
I don't, well, I don't, I don't like, um, um, well, first of all, this whole concept, in, in my opinion, which I know doesn't matter because the law permits it, is in my, in my own personal view is a very dangerous, um, scenario. I, I don't have any empirical data to support how many charitable solicitors have been hit or how many property damage accidents have been reported by somebody trying to swerve or miss somebody. But I find the notion of people standing in the street, uh, in moving traffic, uh, just it's an accident waiting to happen. I don't think we should be, uh, telling people, I agree with Mr. Zadi. I don't think we should be telling people, uh, when they ought to like jump off to the side of the road. I think that's, I agree with that. Uh, I would also point out in sub-paragraph F where it says solicitation shall not occur at any time in, when, in, any time within which it, some, within which rain or snow are falling. I think it should be inclement weather, period. How about fog? Anyone care about fog where you can't see in front of you? Uh, I mean, this whole, what does it mean when ice and snow are present upon the highway? Does that mean if there's a blaze of ice, does that mean, I mean, it's just, you know, legislation needs to be clear and it needs to be precise. And I, I understand we're trying to, uh, appease the state statute, which I think is nuts. But, uh, I think we should amend F to just say inclement. Uh, frankly, I think, you know, because this does seem to, uh, uh, require the city manager to somehow give her blessing over this activity, if I'm reading this right. You're the one that can tell him that they just can't do it or the police can't. So I just think it should be inclement. And I think it, there should be some statement, um, inherent at the discretion of the chief of police or city manager. Because it should be some, uh, clause that triggers what they can do. Um, I mean, it's just bad.
I, I know. I know you hate this whole.
Well, I don't like this at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think it's just a inviting, very dangerous, uh, activity. And especially, uh, we've heard enough stories here, and Joe and I heard enough stories knocking on doors in the last three months about people being angry that people don't stop at stop signs and go through yield signs and things like that. And we all know the reason for that. It's because they're busy texting or responding to an email or something. And this is just, uh, a nuts activity in my opinion in the climate we have for traffic controls. So. But, uh, subject to my changes, I mean, I don't, I know what you're trying to do and it doesn't appear that we have a lot of discretion.
All right, got, got it.
But I'd like to try to have the city manager or the chief of police have control over it. And we get, like I said, the weather shouldn't say rain or snow. It should just say inclement.
Okay, got it.
Because that's much broader and gives them much more discretion.
And I'd put public, public.
Any motion, we sort of for first reading?
No, we're just, you're just gonna, and I, I would put public safety in case it's a Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I've got notes on that. So.
Yeah, on, uh, the bottom of page three with this and shall locate two highly reflective orange cones in the center of the roadway. I would appreciate that this stop at it when traffic is moving on the bottom of three. Um.
You don't want the cones?
We are making it virtually impossible for people to do what was done for years in this city. I was involved with Kiwanis. We had to come to the city commission, ask permission. We sold at intersections. We basically normally stood on the curb, but we would move out to give people peanuts and collect money. We didn't stand in the middle of the street. But even if you stand in the middle of the street, when you start doing the cones and stuff like that, where does someone just pick up a cone? I mean, Boy Scouts probably.
I agree, I, I agree. Doesn't matter. It's, you, you're creating an obstruction in traffic. Then you're gonna get the question of where you put the cone. Were you obstructing traffic? Did somebody have to avoid the cone? I agree. This is one of those rare occasions. I agree completely with Commissioner Jenks.
I will tape record the section.
You can take this part of the tape and frame it.
All right, got it.
You're absolutely right.
Um, just the clerical, twenty-eight ten in the first sentence. Shall not block, comma, small o for obstruct. First sentence.
Shall that block.
A peddler, solicitor, canvasser, shall not block, comma, small o.
Mine looks like that. I don't know what you think. He wants a comma after block. It should be one sentence.
It's a, it's a series of phrases.
Yeah, it is a comma.
Have you got, you might have a different one than we do.
Yeah, you, you're revised one.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's, yeah, okay. All right, that's done in the.
Thank you.
Okay, got it.
Any public comment? Seeing none. We will, uh, take this up officially, uh, at next month's meeting with the changes.
Yep.
Thank you. Item number eight is a matter of considerate.
Wait, don't, don't you have to vote on the first reading?
Well, you just, just, no, you just introduced it.
No, I, I agree.
She says.
Introduced the first reading, so.
We should put in a part that should be on roller skates or something. About skateboards.
Item number eight, matter of considering an adoption of the ordinance, uh, to amend chapter forty zoning in general. This is, uh, section forty dash one to amend the definition of the rear yard. We had the first reading at the last commission meeting. We have a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we, uh, approve the, uh, changes that we heard at the, uh, last meeting. The proposal in regard to, uh, the, uh, definition of rear yard and so forth as presented. We reviewed it thoroughly, uh, the last time. Mr. Berry spoke eloquently about it at the last meeting. And I believe it's, we discussed it and everybody seemed to be of the view that it was a positive and, uh, timely, uh, change to that.
Second.
Any public comment? Any other comments or questions at the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item eight A, we added to the agenda in regards to the ADA ramp at the rear of city hall.
Yes, I apologize for getting this on the agenda at the last minute. It was just an oversight not to add it. But we think this is important enough to get done as quickly as possible that we added it tonight. You may have noticed that the ramp at the rear door of city hall is blocked off because it is, the cement has deteriorated so much. Uh, I don't put a lot of work into this. Came up with an alternative surfacing, a type of aluminum uh, that we hope will last longer than the concrete. Uh, bids were sent out. One bid was received um, for eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the, um, the ramp itself as well as the installation. So that's your consideration to approve the award of the bid in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So.
Support. Any public comments? Any comments or questions at the commission? All those, oh, Commissioner Jenks.
Yeah, I would just like to request that, uh, uh, city double-check to make sure we can't get a third federal or state program to pay for this.
Do you have suggestions?
No, but a lot of times there are ADA programs that make something ADA compliant. And since we have free access to the grantsmanship index or whatever it's called, um, it's a quick search.
Uh, because city hall is a polling place, I would check with Secretary State's office. They have dollars available, uh, for ADA compliance when the building is a polling place. So check with Secretary State.
Those are good suggestions. Thank you.
And then just quickly done.
Thank you for both.
Susan Karabelnik. Um, I think it would be a good idea to also keep in mind that when they do that ramp, that it is, um, non-slippery.
Oh, believe me, that's one of the, one of the single criteria being, uh, IBC, ADA and OSHA.
Because some of the ramps around are just very slick when they're wet and when there's snow and ice. These orange bumpy things that you have at the corners help, but I don't know that they're big enough really to do a lot of good. They need to be further out.
Which is one of the reasons this was bid out to the industry to see to it this is architectural grade and meets all the requirements that it has per state ADA requirements as well. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have, uh, five sets of reports in minutes. We have a motion to receive and file.
So move. Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, on the, uh, Huntington Woods finance report for October, um, there's seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars in, uh, delinquent taxes budgeted for. Um, it's a tiny amount. It's, uh, only three quarters of one percent of our budget. But I'd like to see if we can get that much, much lower. So I'd like to request that we do actively work with residents, especially where it's known that, uh, they've had problems in the past to see if there are mechanisms for either lowering that amount or spreading it out. Um.
I'll make a comment or two about that. Countywide, we're one of the, if not the lowest at the very bottom of the barrel in terms of having very few delinquent taxes any particular fiscal year. Uh, we go through a lot of extra effort, the staff does, in terms of, um, mailing out reminders, uh, seeing to, sue it, and on some occasions where people are actually called. Uh, we go well above the board to see to it that, uh, we make sure everyone understands and knows not only when the taxes are due, but what is required of them at, at any given time. Uh, uh, out of all the cities that I've worked at in my career, uh, we do a better job than any of them. That doesn't mean that we can't do better and we certainly will try. But I can tell you that in Oakland County, I don't think there's anyone, any city jurisdiction that I know of village township CVT that does as good a job as we.
Well, I still would, that's one number of where I would love to see it close to zero.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Doesn't the county make us whole from the delinquent tax revolving fund during, uh, tax settlement? And then those homeowners through the county treasurer, once the city's made whole, they do payment plans and a number of different things.
They, they do, they do. Um, the only thing that does not get paid by the revolving fund is personal property taxes, which are aggressively sought after via the county. And only after six years of delinquency, they may get expunged from the role, a small proportion of it, but it is extremely small.
And our two banks are exempt from personal property taxes anyway. So we don't have a lot of that to begin with.
And there you have it.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Is it appropriate to, uh, comment on the warrant now or when it's brought up?
When it's brought up.
Thank you.
All those, uh, in favor of receiving and filing the reports in minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number ten is warrant number three thirty. Do we have a motion to approve subject to full audit?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Jenks, do you have a question?
Uh, I have, uh, two comments. One, I would like to thank the city and especially Ms. One, I would like to thank the city and especially Mr. Lehman for paying the National League of Cities dues. They do a tremendous amount of lobbying for us, and right now that is highly critical, aside from training. Uh, one year, Tony saw that I didn't, uh, go to, uh, Washington, so he said, well, no one's interested. And he didn't pay dues that year, so I'm glad it was paid. The other thing, which I think is extremely important, for the seventeen years I have been on the commission, we have always approved a warrant. And for the last few years, that has been part of the commission packet that is up on the website, so anyone can look at it. There was a question raised, or a comment raised earlier today about transparency. We don't know how much we're paying attorneys, we don't know how much we're paying everyone else. Every single check that is written by the city is in this report, which we approve at least once a month, if not more frequently. So the transparency has been there, it has been up on the website. The only problem is some people are too lazy to go and look at it.
Any other comments or questions? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers' report.
Yep, I just want to remind everybody that, um, all city offices with the Library of Recreation Center will be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for Thanksgiving holiday. And the Recreation Department has a new shipment of sweatshirts and T-shirts that would make great holiday gifts if you're looking for something, uh, uh, if you're looking for a holiday gift. And also the teen council still has window clean, window clings and stickers available for a nominal price at the Recreation Center, and that is a fundraiser for them. Just show your pride.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager? Okay, moving on to commissioners' remarks, we'll start with Mayor Proton Iverson.
Great, thank you. I just want to, uh, say I wish everyone a very safe and happy, uh, Thanksgiving. And, uh, congratulations to my colleagues on their reelection. Thank you.
Commissioner Jenks?
Um, have a happy Turkey Day. Um, and you'll have turkey for a couple of days after the Happy Turkey Day. Um, but also think about other people at this time. Uh, most likely through your synagogue, your church, your mosque, they're helping people less fortunate. Um, I know the group I'm involved with, we just gave away nine turkeys, uh, plus a whole bunch of food that goes with that, especially for kids in an elementary school. Um, share the good fortune, and hopefully this weekend we will not have a major snowstorm.
Thank you. Commissioner Rozell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, uh, happy Thanksgiving to our, uh, residents. I'd like to thank, uh, the residents too for their confidence in re-electing me to another term. The, uh, outcome and margin was certainly, uh, overwhelming and much appreciated. And, uh, I'll continue to do as I've done the last term and doing my best to represent them. Congratulations to my colleague, uh, I don't know what I'm gonna do these next three months. I won't be seeing you, uh, all the time, so, uh, you know.
So you can call me. Like you did for three months.
Right, right. Uh, I, I also, uh, want to, uh, uh, acknowledge I was at Bela's Pizza tonight for the fundraiser for our teen council. It was a great turnout, so hopefully they raise some good money, uh, for our teen council. And I'd like to acknowledge the Boy Scouts in back for their, uh, uh, taking part in this evening's meeting and, uh, making it through the entire meeting. So, uh, gentlemen, thank you very much, uh, for being part of it.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. I want to thank the, uh, scouts that are here also. Nice to see, uh, young people show an interest in, in government, even if it's at, uh, the local level here, you're not exactly seated in the halls of Congress, but for the sixty-three residents who live in Huntington Woods, this is, uh, their epicenter and what they rely on. So we're honored that you would come and sit through the meeting tonight and, uh, look forward to your contacting us anytime you have a idea or a comment or a question. We, we definitely like to hear what everyone in the city has to say, which I also, uh, appreciate the, uh, resounding confidence of the residents, not, not in me or in Joe, but when seventy-six percent of the residents give their support to, uh, to people, I think what they're expressing is, uh, and what I heard throughout the months of the campaign and the, on election day is that, uh, they have a very positive view of our city. And they're very satisfied with city government in its entirety, that Mr. Lehman, Mr. Berry, Joy, Amy, uh, all of the people, the police officers, the city government generally is very well regarded here at a time where Congress has single-digit approval ratings. I think what we saw in this last election is a referendum on our city. And I'm appreciative that the voters think, uh, that what we're doing here and what Tony and everybody else does is so, you know, positive. And, uh, I, I really took it, I didn't take it as a referendum on me, I take it as a referendum on, on our city. And that's the way I look at it. I also, uh, tonight just want to take a minute to thank, uh, Mr. Mark Gronzato, who was the lawyer who represented Huntington Woods in the five-year-old, uh, case involving court funding in the Oak Park District Court. Uh, that despite the adversarial nature of the claim, this was not a case reflecting on, uh, personalities or on individuals, it was a business dispute between two entities, the cit- well, three entities, City of Huntington Woods, City of Pleasant Ridge, Oak Park, actually four, and the district court. And it was an extraordinarily complex case that we succeeded in winning at the Michigan Supreme Court level, which is very hard to do because the Michigan Supreme Court accepts less than three percent of the cases that are presented to it. So, uh, hats off to Mr. Gronzato for his extraordinary skill and ability. And finally, I too want to wish everybody a safe, happy, and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I would also like to congratulate my colleagues on their reelection. Uh, appreciate having you on board for the past years of service and looking forward to working with you for the next few.
Here, here.
Uh, I'd also like to extend a, a wish for a healthy, happy, uh, Thanksgiving. And as my, uh, my favorite, uh, stadium announcer in my college days at Spartan Stadium always said, if you, if you are traveling, please drive as if your family was in the other car. With that.
Bob? Could the, uh, Boy Scouts perhaps, are you still, uh, selling candles and wreaths and things like that? That's finished? Okay.
Nice try.
Just checking.
Alright, meeting adjourned.